For the 22nd, we have the Board of Education Board meeting. Now we hold the call for order. They call when you please follow.
Kevin Hall Tucker?
Here.
Austin Full Navy?
Here.
Amelia Hampton? Jesse Maldonado?
Here.
Steve Mattall?
Here.
Zach McCallum?
Here.
Jerry Russ?
Here.
And Julie Weisner?
Here.
We will move on, thank you. We're moving on to land recognition. All right, for this ignition, for the speaker for this meeting is Brad Brown. Let Brad Lee please provide their recognition.
Hi, good evening. I'd like to start our meeting with the acknowledgement that the land we are on is the traditional homeland of the Kalapuaia people. The Kalapuaia were stewards of this very land for over fourteen thousand years, for their traditional way of life was forever disrupted. We start our meeting with humility and reverence for the original inhabitants, the Kalapuaia.
Thank you. We will now move on to the oath of office to formally swear in our newly elected board members, Julie Weisner, Jerry Russ, Austin Full Navy, Jesse Maldonado, and Amelia Hampton. President Bulger, please, excuse you, President Bulger, will you please introduce your vote?
I'd be happy to, and I think what I'll do, since I don't think we need microphones for this, unless you tell me differently. So I'll just come to the middle here, and I'll call you later on if you have time.
You're using it from the podium?
From the podium?
So, so the folks on Zoom can hear you?
Okay, sounds good, okay. Um, it's my pleasure. Would our newly appointed board member, Julie Weisner, please come forward?
Okay.
You have been elected to membership on a Lake Community College Board of Education. You are committed on your willingness to serve. Appointment to public office carries with it certain responsibilities. Your responsibility is not limited to any particular area, but applies to the whole district. Your judgment must be based on the needs and desires of all the people affected by your actions. As a member of this board, you have the opportunity to voice your individual judgments in the determination of programs and policies. According to state law, the purpose of the community college is to provide educational services, including but not limited to vocational or technical education programs, lower division collegiate programs, adult education, and community services. I trust that you will continue to familiarize yourself with your legal and moral responsibilities through careful examination of the laws of the state of Oregon, and that you will apply your knowledge through the careful development and application of board policies. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and of the state of Oregon, and that you will, to the best of your ability, uphold board policies, and faithfully perform the duties of a member of the Board of Education for Lane Community College during your term of office? You may answer, I do. I do. Thank you, congratulations. Would our newly appointed board member, Jesse Maldonado, please come forward? You have been elected to membership on a Lane Community College Board of Education. You are committed on your willingness to serve. Appointment to public office carries with it certain responsibilities. Your responsibility is not limited to any particular area, but applies to the whole district. Your judgment must be based on the needs and desires of all the people affected by your actions. As a member of this board, you will have the opportunity to voice your individual judgments in the determination of programs and policies. According to state law, the purpose of the community college is to provide educational services, including but not limited to vocational or technical education programs, lower division collegiate programs, adult education, and community services. I trust that you will continue to familiarize yourself with your legal and moral responsibilities through careful examination of the laws of the state of Oregon, and that you will apply your knowledge through the careful development and application of board policies. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and of the state of Oregon, and that you will, to the best of your ability, uphold board policies and faithfully perform the duties of a member of the Board of Education for Lane Community College during the term of office? You may answer, I do.
I do.
Thank you. Would our newly appointed board member, Austin Full Navy, please come forward? You have been elected to membership on a Lane Community College Board of Education. You are committed on your willingness to serve. Appointment to public office carries with it certain responsibilities. Your responsibility is not limited to any particular area, but applies to the whole district. Your judgment must be based on the needs and desires of all the people affected by your actions. As a member of this board, you will have the opportunity to voice your individual judgments in the determination of programs and policies. According to state law, the purpose of the community college is to provide educational services, including but not limited to vocational or technical education programs, lower division collegiate programs, adult education, and community services. I trust that you will continue to familiarize yourself with your legal and moral responsibilities through careful examination of the laws of the state of Oregon, and that you will apply your knowledge through the careful development and application of board policies. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and of the state of Oregon, and that you will, to the best of your ability, uphold board policies, and faithfully perform the duties of a member of the Board of Education for Lane Community College during your term of office? You may answer, I do.
I do.
And would our newly appointed board member, Jerry Russ, please come forward? You have been elected to membership on a Lane Community College Board of Education. You are committed on your willingness to serve. Appointment to public office carries with it certain responsibilities. Your responsibility is not limited to a particular area, but applies to the whole district. Your judgment must be based on the needs and desires of all the people affected by your actions. As a member of this board, you will have the opportunity to voice your individual judgments in the determination of programs and policies. According to state law, the purpose of the community college is to provide educational services, including but not limited to vocational or technical education programs, lower division collegiate programs, adult education, and community services. I trust that you will continue to familiarize yourself with your legal and moral responsibilities through careful examination of the laws of the state of Oregon, and that you will apply your knowledge through the careful development and application of board policies. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and of the state of Oregon, and that you will, to the best of your ability, uphold board policies and faithfully perform the duties of a member of the Board of Education for Lane Community College during your term of office? You may answer, I do.
I do.
Thank you, President Bulger. Welcome to our new board members. We will now recess our business meeting and move to executive session. The Board of Education of Lane Community College will now meet in executive session under ORS 192.6602D to conduct deliberations of the persons designated by the governing body to carry out labor negotiations. ORS 192.6602A to employ, sorry, to consider the employment of a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual agent. And ORS 192.6602H to consult with counsel concerning the legal rights and duties of a public body with regard to current litigation or litigation likely to be filed. Representatives of the news media and business unit staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session except for tonight's deliberations regarding labor negotiations, which are not open to the media. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on or otherwise disclose any of the deliberations or anything said about the authorized subjects during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision may be made in executive session. We'll now, uh, reconvene, the second, the July 2nd, the College Board of Education Board meeting will now reconvene. And the first order of business will be the, uh, taking the oath. President Bulger, will you please introduce the oath, sir?
Yes, I'd like to go to the podium here, and I will be asking Amelia Hampton to come up.
Yeah, one more person to square and vote.
Well, newly appointed student board member Amelia Hampton has come forward. Uh, please raise your right hand, Amelia. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the state of Oregon, and the laws thereof, and the board policies of the Lane Community College District? You may answer, I do.
I do.
During your term, will you faithfully and impartially discharge the responsibility of the office of non-voting student board member to the best of your ability? You may answer, I do.
I do.
Congratulations.
Welcome to the board. Congratulations, and to our fellow new board members. Uh, the first action item tonight is to appoint the 2025, 2026 Board Chair, Vice Chair. Uh, what I'd like to ask for is first for nominations, and then if people could speak to those nominations, and once it looks like we have a priority support for one of those nominations, last for a motion, and then approve the motion as a majority vote of the board. So that, I'd like to open it up for nominations for the chair. Do you?
I'd like to nominate Trustee Hall Tucker.
Are there any other nominations?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Trustee Full Navy, to be nice, Chairman's word.
And, uh, to those that were nominated, do you accept nominations? Yes, we both do. Uh, we either would like to speak to your nominations, and then we can have a nominee seat.
Um, I've been nominated Kevin, he's been the vice chair all this year, has been doing the work, gotten used to, um, the board, and I found him to be fair and impartial and, um, have a calm and, uh, kind, when you, and so I think he'd make an excellent chair.
Thanks, Chairman. Um, yeah, as I've watched this board, um, over the last few months, eight months, um, I have, um, taken it back. I talked about it while I campaigned and talked about it. Um, why I applied for this board is I believe in local government, and the government can work for the people, and should work for the people, and it does work for the people, and we elected people to positions, and I believe that carries itself over into this election for chair of this board. Um, I believe Austin brings a wealth of experience and knowledge, not only from this community college, but his previous community college board experience, and I believe he will do a fantastic job. I mean, has shown as chair of this board previously that he can do, he do work, and I believe he will make a great chair.
Nice, future goes now into, if you'd like to make a statement, and then we will open it up to the rest of the board for comments.
Okay. Thank you, uh, thank you for the nomination. Um, I have served as vice chair for the past year in, uh, in some really good times and some not so good times, and I think I have a steady hand on the, the guiding principle of this body, and that is students, students, students. I have twenty years of, uh, classroom experience in a university, uh, teaching students and understanding that students are our future, our community's future, our state's future, our nation's future, and every decision that this board makes should be resting very solidly on what does it take to support our students? What does it take to make sure that they're successful, that they're resilient, that they improve their families, their themselves, our community, our state, our nation? So, uh, I would be honored to serve as chair, uh, for this board for the following year. Thank you.
Awesome.
Excellent. Uh, yeah, first off, thank you so much for the nomination, and let me just say, Kevin, I completely agree with you that, uh, you have been a dedicated advocate for students, and I commend you for that, especially your long history with that. Whoever wins, uh, um, this chairmanship, I think our community wins. Um, as stated, I previously served as a board chair. During that time period, we actually were able to pass policies to allow for student voices to be at the table here, uh, at the board, as well as for students to be able to speak first at public comment. Students are my, uh, is my mission, my vision for this institution, and as well as the, uh, opportunities to work with stakeholders within our community, the business community, um, our, our faculty and class-wide professionals, as well as the students who are our most, uh, important stakeholders. Um, overall, uh, we are, I think everybody in this room knows, we're, this is a troubling time. And in this troubling time, we need experience. In this troubling time, we need someone who has worked with institutions across the state, understanding not only our federal level of issues, but state and local level. As president of Oregon Community College Association, I had to, uh, chair and lead the conference of OCCA right after the election. After that election, there was board members from all over the state, um, who were Republicans, Democrats, and I don't like either one of them parties. And, um, and, uh, we came together, and I remember, uh, like figuring out, what am I going to say to this group of people? And what I said was that if we focus on students, that is our mission, that is our goal, to make sure they have every resource that they need to be successful, that they are protected, and that they know that we are there for them, and that's why we are board members, and that's why, and that's the point of all of our community colleges, boys. Thanks.
Would anyone else like to speak to their nominations?
Can I speak again?
Yes.
One of the considerations that I, um, have for how important the next chair is, and although I appreciate, um, Austin's experience, um, in being a president, uh, chair before, is that, um, and I guess it could just be blunt, is staying in the lane. Um, I've made my, uh, thoughts pretty clear about what a role of a board chair is and what it is not. And the board of chair is to be the facilitator of this board. They don't represent the college, the president represents the college, and the board represents the college, but the chair does not. And so I'm, I believe that our next chair needs to be someone who actually understands the role of a chair, and that it is not the, uh, person who's leading the college in a direction. And although I appreciate the, the experience and the comments about OCCA, I think that those, those activities don't have a place here for the chair. I think that Kevin understands very clearly, um, what the role of a facilitator is as a chair. And I think that that's really what we need right now, at this moment. What's critical is to understand a good partnership with the board and our employee, the CEO and president of the college, and not someone who's setting direction. And so that's why I nominated Kevin, and that's why he'll have my senior.
Any other comments?
I'll also, um, throw in some, uh, perspective, um, that I've gained over the last handful of years on the board, watching both, uh, Kevin and Austin, and of course others. Um, the other, and in addition to what Julie said, something that I believe is really important for our board to have is a chair who, um, has, uh, a good working productive, um, relationship with our president, right? That board chair and the president frequently have to meet to think through complicated issues, how, how and when to present them to the board, how much time to allocate, how to accommodate a range of perspectives, um, et cetera, et cetera. And I think that Kevin has, um, spent a lot of time developing that, uh, productive relationship with, uh, Dr. Bulger, and that will assist, um, the, um, that will assist the board in general. Um, so I'll also be supporting Kevin for that reason.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Uh, seeing none, I guess I will move to motions. Uh, we would like to make a motion to appoint one of these individuals as chair.
Can we follow the voting order is, start, they start, start from the first single, I mean, fast.
Uh, I did not get this done. Um, okay. All those in favor of Kevin Hall Tucker, uh, please voice that now.
Who has to cast?
Okay. Zach, would you, maybe just for the benefit of the, if everybody understands the entire process before we move into the voting process? Yeah, apologies. So, we've nominated, we've had, uh, people have spoken, the nominations were closed, and now we're each members to cast one vote only. And so in the order, nominations were received, so Kevin first. So all those in favor of Kevin Hall Tucker, please raise your hand. So I see three in support. Okay, all those in favor of Paul Stute and Full Navy, please raise your hands. Or four in support. Okay, uh, Austin Full Navy is elected by a vote of four, and I will now pass the panel to Austin.
Okay, and actually, it's okay with the board. I, I like to look down the table to make sure when you can raise your hands, I may be able to see them. Is it okay if I sit on the side of the table? And that's, I appreciate that.
That's, thanks. Now we are going, oh, yeah. And now we are going to open up nominations for the board vice chair. We'll go ahead and open that up to nominations. So I nominate, I nominate Jerry Russ. Okay. Any further nominations?
I'll nominate Steve Mattel.
Any other nominations? Uh, with, with that, we will go ahead and move forward to, um, the individuals who nominated to speak, um, about their nominees. We'll start with Zach and then Julie, Zach. I believe Jerry comes in with decades of experience, uh, managing boards and local governments, and I think that, uh, he's the type of person that can hopefully find middle ground for, uh, that the full board can support and, um, have good, honest conversations with everyone and, uh, help move us towards consensus.
It's Julie. Um, Steve has been on the board for a while now, has a lot of board experience, uh, has proven himself to be quite unbiased. He chaired us through the, um, evaluation process. Uh, he showed no favoritism to any particular, um, side of a opinion. Uh, he has, uh, a lot worn, although I appreciate Jerry, um, his decades of experience. He has no experience on the board yet, and I think that having that relationship with the board president and understanding the systems is critical, and I think that Steve will make a very good vice chair.
Uh, Kevin.
I'd also like to speak, uh, in favor of Steve Mattel as vice chair. So I've worked with Steve for the last twelve year, or twelve, seems like twelve.
Really?
Yeah. Two years, and I have been impressed with his.
You're stretching the loop?
Are you trying to help me, or?
Uh, please, please proceed.
Two years, and I've been impressed with his professionalism, his objectivity, his, uh, skill in helping the board reach agreements, uh, where we had various, you know, differing perspectives on an issue. Steve is always the one who comes up with, uh, with some good ideas to bring the board together, and I, I've really appreciated that. Um, and I've learned a lot from him, and I would be, uh, very happy to have Steve Mattel as our vice chair.
Excellent. Uh, with that, we'll have the candidates now speak. Uh, we'll start with Jerry.
I'd be the first to admit that I don't know the complete layout in the chessboard out here at LCC. I have had a lot of executive experience that I think transfers over here. And I'm very comfortable with Steve as well. Steve is my friend. I have gone around to each of the board members since I got elected with one thing in mind. I want to build relationships between board members and the president. I'm good at that. As I go along in life, I've found that relationships are some of the hardest things to maintain, create, and hold on to. And there's, besides your own health, mental health, your relationships are probably the most important thing in your life. And I can do that with this board. I know each of you. So that's the chessboard I bring to the table, is the knowledge about people, how people function, work, cooperate, and that's what I want to see on this board. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Excellent. Um, next we have Steve.
Well, I wasn't expecting to be in this situation, uh, this evening. I, I didn't prepare a speech. I wasn't expecting to be nominated, um, for, for vice chair, and I've had a grand total of about three or four minutes to think about it.
Twelve.
Um, and I think I'm going to decline, um, uh, and throw my, um, my own vote towards, uh, towards Jerry, because I also agree, um, that we, well, Jerry didn't say this, so we have been of quite a divided board. I think the decision, uh, that we were put into this evening is going to exacerbate that, at least for a time. And, um, I do think that Jerry has some unique skill in, uh, and in pulling people together, and, um, and I'm going to put my faith in him to do that.
Amazing, excellent. Uh, with that, it sounds like there's a withdrawal of a nomination. Um, with that, we will move, uh, or any further comments, questions? All right, seeing none, we will move forward to a vote. All those in favor of, um, Jerry Russ as, uh, vice chair, or, uh, vice chair, uh, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. Perfect, that passes. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Absolutely, and, uh, the board members. Yes. I look forward to working with Jerry Russ as, um, as vice chair, and, um, in regards, and also, uh, look forward to working with you, uh, Dr. Bulger. Um, and I look forward to, uh, the various things that we can be a part of to continue to build this community college, our community's college. And, uh, yeah, and I look forward to the conversations. Um, and I want to make sure that every board member knows, uh, especially from my past experience as a board chair, that all voices are heard. I want all voices are heard. The discussion, the, uh, you as individuals, um, bring so much to this board, your lived experiences, your past experiences, your professional experiences, and we great, and that's a great asset to this institution. I want to hear from you. Thank you. Um, we are now going to move on. Oh, just really quick, we did the land acknowledgement, uh, prior to the executive session, so I just wanted to make sure that the, um, um, the, um, audience was aware of that. Uh, we are moving on to the adoption of the agenda. Uh, this will require a motion in a second. So moved. Excellent. A second. Excellent.
Um, excuse me, Chair.
Yes.
Uh, we want to give you the script, and so if you would allow us to do that.
Script right here.
Um, the, there could be a script that talks about the oath of office, um, that, not the oath of office, but the ethics, uh, the code of ethics, that we're, we want to add to the agenda. Um, we just want to pause for just a second and make sure that you-
Oh, gotcha, gotcha, yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah, that was on the first page, I was just following on this side, but, um, yeah. Um, so that, that is to be added to the agenda, the, um, ethics training?
Uh, yes, it should be listed in the, in the script.
Excellent, yep, and, uh, it's been added, uh, it was desired to add, uh, under section seven, um, A, ethics and training and affirmation is, um, as an item to the agenda. So, um, I'll repeat that motion if we want to add that to the agenda. Excellent. Amend my, the motion to include that in the agenda. And do you second that? Uh, yes. Excellent. It's moved and seconded to, um, to the amended agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oh. Little discussion. Oh, yeah, well, my apologies, yeah, discussion, my apologies, go ahead.
I actually have a question. I think the motion should include the board member signing the, um, the ethics, uh, agreement?
Yeah, I believe Brett has a, um, uh, answer to that.
Excuse me, Chair.
Oh, sorry.
Um, the, uh, the reason for this is that the organizational meeting actually should include a presentation on ethics, and there's an affirmation document to sign. Um, and we have missed this in the past, and because I think that the college has been doing this always in September, and that's what we have done since I've arrived. Um, so we are going to do it now, though, in our, our organizational meeting. So those two documents are the same. You have, actually, I think it's board policy, what is it, twenty-seven fifteen? And so you have the code of ethics, but you also have the, um, the affirmation document, and that's, uh, has a signature line. So that's what this item is all about.
Absolutely, and I believe we have to see the presentation in order to sign it, from my understanding.
Um, we will, we will have a presentation.
Oh, yeah, yeah, oh, I know, I know, I know. It was good that, uh, Kevin was, uh, saying that part of the motion should be that we will sign it afterwards, and I believe that the spirit of the motion is that once we get a presentation- And I believe that the spirit of the motion is that once we get a presentation, then we would sign it. But does that?
That would be fine. That would be fine for us.
That works, Ken?
Thank you.
Excellent. Perfect. Great. All right. Excellent. So with that, we have an amended agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? The equity lens is a part of your packet. And I encourage all board members to read it and continue to read it. It's very critical to make sure that we're serving all individuals and students within our institution. I never want this to just be another thing on the agenda to just skip over. So be sure to definitely read that over. We're now going to move on to responses to information requests. I didn't see that there was any information requests. So we will move on to public comment. And I believe we have a list of speakers and we start with students first. No students, okay.
There are no students. For the first three, I'll list out the three at a time. So everybody kind of knows the order. First up, we have Anne McGrail, then we have Leslie Soriano Cervantes, and then Rick Riordan. Anne is first.
Wonder how many speakers do we have?
Thirteen.
Thirteen. Thank you.
What a bad decision.
I believe so.
You gave some air.
Good evening.
I think it's a whole list.
Welcome and congratulations to our newly elected board members. I'm Anne McGrail. I teach in the humanities division. As union members, we are presenting you with a signed poster that displays our goals for our faculty, for our students and our campus with over 100 physical signatures. We are sharing it today for the benefit of our new board members and because the administration and LCC EA are negotiating a new contract after many delays and another pause for summer. In the spring of 24, all faculty survey, 215 faculty responded with 99% voting to endorse these goals. During spring 25, we circulated a petition with these goals and have now gathered 516 signatures, including 300 faculty members joined by 216 students and campus and community members. Together united, we urge you to support these goals in the interest of creating the college our community deserves. Faculty are united in support of the following: fair pay. Our salaries have fallen 13% behind inflation, which is higher here on the West Coast, and competitive salaries are necessary to recruit and retain faculty. In addition, everyone should receive equal pay for equal work. Part-time faculty have the same qualifications as full-time faculty, teach the same classes and serve the same students. Yet, part-time faculty earn only 81.5% of the salary for teaching the same class compared to full-time colleagues at LCC. Part-time faculty deserve pay parity. Reasonable workload is a major concern for faculty members. Our survey data indicate that 78% of faculty report working more than their assigned and compensated FTE, with 38% working 50 hours a week and 19% working 60 or more hours per week. 89.5% work report working evenings and or weekends outside of regularly assigned times at least half of the weeks each term. In addition, the workload factor for labs and lecture labs is out of date and falling further and further behind the statewide average. At point 682, LCC has a lower factor for lab courses than the average for community colleges in Oregon. We all want a safe, healthy campus. This means that LCC must be prepared in the event of a lockdown or public health emergency. We should expand access to gender-neutral restrooms, safe spaces for worship and lactation, and ensure the campus is physically accessible. And it is imperative that we expand access to higher education for our community and enhance sanctuary protections for our students.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board. My name is Leslie Soriano Cervantes, and I am the bilingual, bicultural career counselor here at Lain. So I will continue reading the statement, necessities for student success. With the uncertainty that many students are feeling and with the rapid changes at the national level, career counselors and mental health supports are more critical than ever. So we must ensure that there are enough career and mental health counselors, advisors and tutors to support students. Faculty stand with students. We know that we know that support for students' basic needs, such as a food pantry and a basic need center, is essential for their success. Likewise, providing faculty time to develop open education resources or OERs will relieve financial pressure on students with low or no-cost textbooks. Furthermore, when class sizes are reasonable, students form stronger relationships with their instructors and classmates, build more confidence and gain skills they need to succeed. Reasonable class sizes are key to student success and persistence. Providing the essentials for faculty working conditions is critical for our campus. From our all-faculty survey, 47% of faculty have considered seeking a job elsewhere due to working conditions at LCC. Many faculty have one or more other jobs besides working at LCC. All faculty need stability and job security to do our best work and dedicate our full attention to our students. Faculty working conditions are student learning conditions. Still, we lack the basics we need as faculty. 17% of faculty report not having office space at LCC that allow them to meet privately with students, which not only makes effective meetings difficult, but creates problems with adhering to FERPA requirements. 28% report not having access to the technology needed to do their job. In addition, we must ensure that faculty do not suffer discrimination. And that our search process process adhere to the highest standards of ethics and integrity. Furthermore, we must admit, furthermore, we must ensure our First Amendment speech rights, which are under fire by the Fed new federal administration and in the LCC administration's bargaining proposal that seeks to reduce part-time faculty rights are fully protected so that we collectively can, in turn, support our community college mission. Association rights and legal compliance. Finally, our faculty and classified unions deserve safe spaces to meet with adequate lighting and ventilation.
Be time.
And
Go ahead. Fishy's thought that, yep.
Free from rodents and sewers. Yes, those are real issues. In addition, LCC is out of date regarding with Oregon's Public Employees Collectives Bargaining Act, which allows employer-paid part-time for union negotiations, membership activities, and grievance administration. Faculty are united in improving conditions on campus. 99% endorse these goals so that we may create the campus our community deserves. We urge the board to invest in the central instructional and student services mission to the college.
We thank you for your comments. Thank you.
Good evening, board members.
Evening.
Back on May 27, several members of Human Resources and LCC EA, including myself, attended a presentation that discussed some of the new changes to both the Moda and Kaiser health plans. We also reviewed a proposal from a third party, One Digital, about using a healthcare reimbursement arrangement. This proposal would have LCC employees go from a lower co-pay and deductible plan into a substantially higher co-pay and deductible plan, which would be a significant reduction in benefits with the idea that the HRA would bridge the difference. Unfortunately, after doing additional research and reviewing the material, I cannot recommend this approach. Please allow me to explain my concerns. With this proposal, LCC employees would go from a Moda Plan One that would have a deductible of 700 for an individual to a plan that has a $2,300 deductible for an individual. Out-of-pocket maximums would change from 700 to 3,750 for individuals. Likewise, with Kaiser, you would move from a $400 deductible for individuals to a $1,200 deductible for individuals with out-of-pocket maximums going from 1,500 to 4,500, again with the idea that the HRA would make it whole. Unfortunately, like any other insurance model, this is based on the premise that you have enough low utilizers of insurance to subsidize the higher utilizers. Or some of the other research I've done with Hillsboro School District, Daphne Fisk, she says a lot of this depends on the demographics. The presentation we attended presented no information on the demographics. Also, unlike OEBB, which has a statewide pool of tens of thousands, LCC does not have tens of thousand employees. So we have a much higher risk. And then finally, since One Digital is a third party outside of OEBB, they are not subject to the same constraints and can raise their rates beyond the 3.4% as set in Oregon state law. I thought I'd have a companion to help me read the rest. There you go.
Okay, so I'm reading the rest of the statement here. So in addition to the financial concerns, there are also data security concerns. It seems that One Digital has had some serious data security lapses. In 2021, One Digital notified Blue Shield of California of a data security breach that involved 1,520 Blue Shield members in California. Another incident in 2022 involved employees from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. In this incident, One Digital detected suspicious activity within its systems and confirmed unauthorized access and personal information of employees being exposed. As a result, credit monitoring was offered to affected employees for 24 months. While there have been no recent known incidents involving One Digital, it seems irresponsible to consider going forward with One Digital, One Digital as an HR, a HRA overlay, unless there are additional assurances about security precautions being taken. And in addition to these data security concerns, there are also administrative concerns. While the automated claims fee from Moda seems to be working well, there is no automatic claims fee to any of the Kaiser Permanente as discussed at the May 25, 2025 presentation. As a result, LCC employees who have Kaiser will have to manually submit receipts to One Digital to get reimbursement, according to Robert Young, Chair of the OEBB. There are other additional administrative considerations, such as if an employee gets prescribed a medication that is not on the Moda or Kaiser formulary. Since the employer, that is, LCC, determines what is covered under an HRA, it is unclear how this would work with One Digital. I believe it is in everyone's best interest to review health insurance options. There are plenty of things we can do to educate our LCC community on how to make the most of their health insurance and save themselves and the college money. So in conclusion, the One Digital HRA model is too risky, both for employees and for the institution. In addition, it creates significant administrative burden for both the college and the individual employees. Unfortunately, based on financial, data, data security and administrative concerns, we cannot, in good conscience, recommend using One Digital at this time. Thank you.
And for those online, that was Jay Frazier. The next three commenters I have signed up are Dawn Easton, Amy Beasley, Wendy Simmons. Thank you.
So Jay's next online?
Uh, Dawn.
Oh, Dawn is the next. Yeah, gotcha. 10-4.
Good evening. My name is Dawn Easton, computer science faculty. In solidarity with LCC colleague, the LCC EA colleagues, I'm reading this on behalf of an LCC EA member who wishes to remain anonymous. LCC says it would like to create a culture of belonging at an institutional level. The burden of that culture falls squarely on the shoulders of the institution and those that represent it. Starting from the very beginning of an outreach process to hire potential candidates for employment, all the way to the students the college serves. A culture of belonging must permeate every aspect and every corner of the college. Unfortunately for LCC, the search process for the Associate Vice President of Culture and Belonging resulted in failure. The college is now going into its third year without the position being filled. At a time when people of color and students of color are increasingly becoming targets of federal overreach and oppressive actions, now more than ever, this position is needed. LCC needs a courageous truth teller who is qualified and well-rounded as a leader in this role. This search did yield a pool of qualified candidates. Candidates with doctorates, candidates that represented various walks of life with lived and professional experience, even a candidate that works in the governor's office specifically on issues of equity, inclusion, and racial justice. Any of those candidates would have been suitable to fill the position. Yet, the search was deemed failed by administrative leadership. Candidates in this pool were told the position had evolved, essentially saying that the criteria changed. And yet, how the position has evolved and the criteria has changed remains a mystery. This failure reflects on how the college sees and values the position. But it's also a failure in that the college lost thousands of dollars in faculty and staff productivity, time, and effort. From a fiduciary standpoint, the investment of time from those who served on the search committee and who attended open forums, as well as the time it took to evaluate each and every application, cost the college a considerable amount. Now, faculty and staff have received an email inviting us to yet again attend an open forum, share thoughts about the qualities most needed in this leadership role, and to highlight current opportunities or challenges related to our campus climate. This is a clear redundancy and a very poor use of institutional resources. It also hurts morale. It would appear that what we are doing with this position is a performative one, or put another way, as one of the open forum attendants attendees prephrased it to a candidate in the forum, tokenized. Unfortunately, LCC's behavior continues, behaviors continue the nagging narrative that a culture of belonging remains elusive and remains performative and, yes, tokenized. LCC requires a commitment to financial responsibility when conducting these types of searches and much more serious and significant commitment to the work of culture and belonging in our college community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board and President Bulger. My name is Amy Beasley, and I've been a faculty member here in writing and literature for over 20 years. I'm here to speak in solidarity with my LCC EA colleagues about the administration's proposals to increase class sizes as well as the number of classes faculty will teach. There are multiple concerns with these proposals. I'm mindful of the impact this would have on my part-time colleagues, for instance. And I won't have time to address all of them in these three minutes. So I'll use my time to focus on the impact this will have on our students and on our responsibilities as a community college. Because not only does proposing to require faculty to teach more classes with more students in them devalue the work we do as teachers, but it devalues our students as individuals and devalues what we are here to do as a college for our community. Each and every student comes to us with their own particular backgrounds, uniquely prepared in some ways for our classes, and more and more uniquely struggling. These challenges are multiplying and becoming more severe. More and more of our students are underprepared for our classes. More of our students are facing mental health issues that create barriers to their success. More of our students are grappling with financial and other outside pressures in their lives that interfere with their ability to succeed. There's been decreasing access to counseling and tutoring resources that our students desperately need. Generative AI is consuming hours of our time every week. And of course, there's a political climate that is affecting the mental and emotional well-being of all of us in the classroom, students and instructors alike. Some of our students are also living with very real fears about being targeted for reasons such as immigration status and or gender. The list goes on. As faculty, we are told that we are the one guaranteed point of contact that our college has with our students. We receive weekly emails with tips about how to retain students. I understand this responsibility and I take it seriously. Because I agree, especially now with the increasing struggles and pressures they are facing, our students really need us. However, it's already impossible for me to help every student in my class the way I know I could if I had the hours to work with them as the individuals they are. In fact, because of these increasing challenges, it's becoming more impossible every term. In fact, because of these increasing challenges, it's becoming more impossible every term. Already, I lose students from my classes who I could have helped if I had more time to work with them. If I, along with all of my colleagues, become responsible for teaching more students due to additional classes and/or increased class sizes, we will lose students, a lot of them. There's no way around that truth. This is not a way to increase retention and enrollment or to help our bottom line. Our students will disappear from our classes at a much greater rate. They will give up on college. And most importantly, we would be failing these students who need us in these difficult and uncertain times. We would be failing to fulfill our responsibility as a college for the community we serve. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, President Bulger and board members. I am Wendy Simmons, a faculty member in PE, and I'm reading the statement in solidarity with my union colleagues. The college needs to be transparent and provide the Board of Education members the information they need to do what the people of Lane County elected the board to do. The college recently suspended the Licensed Practical Nurse, LPN, program without consulting the board or notifying the public. This is not following policy nor normal practice. In Chapter 4 of the LCC Board Policy Manual, Board Policy Number 4350 states, "The Board of Education shall approve of all major academic vocational and technical programs of study, degrees, certificates, and diplomas. Approve major substantive changes in the college's mission, policies, and programs. In accordance with commu-- with, sorry, in accordance with Oregon Revised Statute 341.290 Regarding General Powers and Rules for the Board of a Community College, it is the Board's responsibility to, among other things, prescribe the educational program, provide and disseminate to the public information relating to the program, operation, and finances of the community college, and maintain programs, services, and facilities, and in connection therewith, cooperate and enter into agreements with any person or public or private agency." The LCC Board of Education own webpage also clearly states, "The Board's charge is to oversee the development of programs and services that Board members believe will best serve the needs of the people of the Lane Community College District. How can the Board fulfill its responsibility if they aren't apprised of what programs are being considered for suspension, suspension, or to be cut?" In a response to an information request provided at the June 18 work session, the college stated, "The decision was made during the normal program review timeframe similar to the renewable energy program and was done prior to the students receiving notification of acceptance to one of 16 possible program spots. Why wasn't the Board given a chance to fulfill its duty to make this decision as the Board is legally obligated to do before the suspension? For instance, the Board might have liked to consider the impact on our students. Almost 40 students were hoping to get in this program after completing all prerequisites required to apply. Students were ready to attend an orientation. Why were they led to believe this was a viable program? The Board might also have been interested in guiding the process. The college says, 'We look forward to the strategic work of assisting the standalone LPN option with an eye towards greater flexibility, assessment, and alignment with student and workforce needs.' Why wouldn't we assess a program before we suspend it?"
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi.
Go ahead.
Sorry, the next three speakers we have listed are Josh Daniels, Erin Bartley, and Verna Reedy.
Thank you. I'm Josh Daniels. I'm picking up. The Board may also have liked to consider the wisdom of this decision. Program was full with 16 students and more than double the applicants for those available seats. It has a 100% pass rate. Local long-term care facilities rely on LCC's program for their LPN workforce needs. So, we suspended a popular program that our community partners need that was full and where the median annual wage as of 2023 is $62,340. Is this how we build our community's trust in LCC? Our students' trust? Our faculty trust? If the administration can cut any program at any time without Board oversight and without notice to the public, can students and other programs trust that these programs will be there when they get ready to attend? Can faculty trust that they will be doing the jobs they were hired for? What can our community partners rely on? I don't understand how not enrolling a fall 2025 LPN cohort was, quote, strategic, close quote. Was it simply strategic in terms of not having to share information with the Board and making the decision outside the public view? Was it strategic in the administration not having to worry about public oversight or accountability? I'm deeply concerned that the administration is not letting the Board fulfill its obligation to the community, that this decision was not at all transparent as it should be, and that the administration has greatly overstepped their role in our college. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, President Bulger and members of the board. My name is Erin Bartley, and I teach writing and literature here at Lane. I am reading a statement in solidarity with my faculty colleagues. Bargaining for a fair faculty contract got off to a slow start this year with virtually no movement from the administration toward agreement. Now, as of yesterday, the faculty contract is expired. Tonight, we'll be sharing some specific examples of the harmful proposals the administration has made, representing you all as the Board of Education in negotiations. Regarding pay and benefits, it is true that the administration's proposal includes 1.3% COLA and is not retroactive if agreement is reached after July 1, 2025, despite all the delays the administration has created, which resulted in a slow start with negotiations. The LCC EA proposal includes the status quo COLA at 3.0% plus 3.1% in year one for uncompensated inflation for a total of 6.1%, keeping in mind that we are 14% behind the federal West Coast cities inflation index. Furthermore, the administration's proposal severely reduces faculty insurance benefits and cuts choices to two plans only, while the faculty proposal adds a cost-saving HSA option for faculty choosing an HSA-eligible plan. It is also true that the administration's proposal would make no movement towards pay parity for part-time faculty, while the union's proposal would establish pay parity for part-time faculty, 40% of whom report having relied on government assistance while working as faculty at LCC. Regarding workload, the administration's proposal would also actually create mandatory overloads for virtually all contracted faculty. These overloads would be compensated at even less than the normal overload rate, which is already only 85% of normal salary. This would create effective salary rates for the overloads that vary depending on the number of credits, with most paid at only 50% to 60% of the normal salary rate. The administration also proposes increasing workloads for lecture labs, reducing part-time faculty pay for lecture labs, all this when LCC is already more than 11% behind the state average in lab workload and compensation rates. The faculty proposal would increase the TLC factor for lab and lecture lab to 1.0 to create equitable workloads because teaching one hour is teaching one hour regardless of the type of course. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Verna Reedy. I'm part-time faculty in PE. I'll continue the statement. It is true that the administration's proposal would impede student success by removing all class size maximums and creating large classes at up to 150% over current class sizes. Their class size determination could also change at any time. However, the faculty proposal will promote student learning by right sizing classes to 30 people for lectures and 24 for labs. The administration's proposal would also reduce class sections available for assignment to part-time faculty, resulting in their loss of work and compensation, while the faculty proposal promotes reasonable workloads and recognizes that 38% of faculty already work a 50-hour week and 19% work 60 hours or more. Regarding safety, the administration's proposal has absolutely no language to address safety in a public health or lockdown emergency, while the faculty proposal provides language for campus security based on LCC's own attorney's recommendations for improving safety, such as locks on classroom doors in the event of a lockdown or violent actor emergency. Regarding job security and stability, the administration's proposal would allow layoffs with only 60 calendar days' notice, such that a faculty member could find out on July 15th that their job is permanently eliminated effective that September, and the full-time faculty positions could be converted to lower-paid contingent part-time work. The majority of faculty are already part-time, and the administration proposes to convert more stable faculty jobs to gig work. That's a quote. In contrast, the faculty proposal provides stability for instructors to stay current in their field with professional development to meet any new requirements for their position. And finally, the administration's proposal would also allow the college to assign individual or program faculty to teach any three consecutive terms, and that could include the summer, which creates an administrative nightmare for payroll and HR, and this is out of sync with student financial aid eligibility for the summer as well. The faculty proposal maintains fall, winter, and spring as the default academic year like the rest of the colleges and universities in the nation. Thank you.
Good evening, board members and President Bulger. My name is Dr. Sarah Erickson. I'm in mathematics and engineering, and I will be finishing the statement about bargaining. Regarding diversity, equity, and inclusion and basic need support, the administration's proposal actually eliminates contractual requirements for managers training on bias and discrimination, as well as training on the contract, which would exacerbate the hundreds of thousands of dollars LCC recently spent on outside attorney fees. The faculty proposal increases support for basic needs, services, and reduced costs for students, while the administration's proposal actually eliminates contractual language, providing students access to the student health clinic. The faculty proposal expands sanctuary campus provisions, while the administration's proposal still excludes protection against discrimination on the basis of immigration status. The administration's proposal also eliminates the requirement to maintain the Long House steward and Native American Student Association coordinator as distinct positions. The administration's proposal also eliminates Jedi, or Justice Equity Diversity and Inclusion faculty positions, and curriculum development funding that addresses the needs of marginalized populations. While the faculty proposal provides for an instructional specialist to assist students in classes with significant ADA accommodations, the administration's proposal does nothing to address the extra support faculty need to serve the 11% of students with accommodations. On the other hand, faculty propose to support students with a basic needs center and sufficient tutors, advisors, and counselors, all of which promote student success. We clearly have a lot of work to do in order to achieve a fair contract that equitably supports our students, faculty, and community. We hope we can count on you for your support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our final two commenters are Susan Fitzgerald and Diana Lerner.
Good evening, Dr. Bulger, Board of Directors. My name is Susan Cox Fitzgerald. I'm a member of the LCC Foundation Board and the Executive Committee, and I'd like to congratulate the new board members and also express gratitude to all of you for your commitment to serving the community. I'm here today to follow up with a letter that was sent from our Foundation Board to the Board of Education recommending that in light of the ongoing investigation of the Board Chair, that he step down from that position until the investigation is completed. We did not receive the courtesy of a reply from anyone, and my understanding is that the similar letter from the NNECP also did not receive a response. Obviously, that is no longer relevant, but what has not changed is the Foundation's concern. We are understanding that the investigation is ongoing, and when it is completed, we respectfully request that we be informed of the findings as it has implication on LCC's standing in the community and the Foundation's ability to raise funds for the college and the students. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's a hard chair. My name is Diane. I'm short. I've been through this before. My name is Diana Lerner, and if I can find my notes, I'll please go forward. And I am the treasurer of the LCC Foundation. So I'd like to congratulate you all for passing a budget that allows for a reserve. I know how difficult putting a budget together and agreeing on one that funds the institution for the coming year is. The other thing, and last thing, you'll be happy to know, I hope that we can see you all August 27th as a joint meeting of the LCC Foundation and your board. So we look forward to seeing you then. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and that concludes public comment. Excellent. Moving on, we'll go to the consent agenda for approval. I will need a motion in a second for the consent agenda.
So moved.
All right. Second. Been moved and seconded. All those in favor, oh, any discussion? All those in favor of approving the consent agenda signify by saying aye. Any nays? Any abstentions? All right, we'll move on to reports. We'll start off with the president's report. Dr. Bulger?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, everyone. The full report is in the board packet, and I'm sure all of you have seen that. I'm going to just summarize that report and provide some highlights of that. As we begin a new fiscal and academic year, I first want to start by warmly welcoming the new board members. That's Jerry Rust and Jesse Maldonado, and also thank Austin Folnagy and Julie Weisman for their continued service. This board together brings a deep commitment to public higher education that I'm aware of, and it's going to help guide us in the important work ahead. We're entering summer term with some momentum. Headcount is up 8% from last year, and enrollment is up over 5%, which is not including courses, college courses that are taught in high schools. That's a promising sign of growing engagement from both students and our employees. But at the same time, we're navigating a rapidly changing external landscape from federal policy shifts to local resource pressures. Yet even in this complexity, we're finding some opportunity. For example, we are closely following the federal, at the federal level, action toward something called the workforce PEL, and we're quite excited about that. The continuation of state funding for benefits navigators and the increase in capital construction support from $8 million to $12 million are both wins for Lane and for our students. Looking ahead, the college is going to be focused on integration. We're going to be aligning student success, operations, and innovation, not as separate efforts, but as a unified agenda. This includes strengthening institutional research, refining communications, and launching a new community newsletter next week. We're giving ourselves also permission to focus, doing fewer things but doing them with greater clarity and impact, and we'll continue to center our work in the values we share, measuring success by the difference we make in people's lives in our region. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have the SGA report. SGA President Hampton. First off, let me also just welcome you to the board, and we look forward to your service to the board. Go ahead.
Thank you. Greetings, President Bulger and board members. I look forward to working with you all in the coming year, and I'm grateful for the opportunity to represent the ASLCC. Furthermore, I'm excited to announce that this year's SGA team is already looking to be a memorable one. I'm pleased to present a report outlining the key priorities for our term, which I'll be working on alongside Vice President Amanda Fallon. First and foremost, we believe that the health and wellness of students is the foundation of any college. One way we plan to enhance access to basic needs is by re-implementing food stamps at the Titan store. According to the 2022 Titan Store Program Review and Strategic Plan, food stamps were accepted-- food stamps were accepted, but this option seems to have been removed. We will also be collaborating with the Athletics Department to create more recreational opportunities for the students, helping to promote physical health and campus engagement. Following this, we aim to expand awareness of vital resources, such as the health clinic and food pantry, to ensure they reach a wider audience of students. This is important to us because the number one concern for students outside of the college is the cost of living. The more students who can utilize the services Lane already has, the more we can provide security to those facing outside expenses. Implementing actionable items, such as resource hunts during Welcome Week and class discussions, will support this initiative. Lastly, we are passionate about educating the ASLCC about their education. As you are well aware, the upcoming budget cuts will significantly impact the outlook of this college. By enhancing fiscal transparency through various communication channels, we can help students understand why these changes are being made and better prepare them for the future. In addition, seeing our concerns brought up by our fellow peers surrounding tuition increases, we are committed to advocating against further costs. As Lane currently has one of the highest institution rates among community colleges in Oregon, any additional increases would render it even less accessible to future and current students. I'm eager to collaborate with the mission of improving student experience. There will be challenging times ahead of us, but for all the incoming senators, that makes us all the more aware that what makes this college is the community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much.
God, thanks Amelia.
Done on your first one.
Really good. I think that deserves applause, actually, yes. Forgive decorum for a moment for that, but yes, excellent. Next, we will move on to Adrian Mitchell, ASLCEA President, for your report.
Good evening, President Bolger and members of the board. It's wonderful to see you all here tonight. I have a few topics I'll be addressing. The first one is congratulations to Julie, Jerry, Jesse, and Austin on your election to represent the people of Lane County and serve on the board. A very special welcome to Jesse and Jerry, as well as congratulations and welcome to Amelia. We're optimistic that together, the full board will provide leadership and stability for our LCC campus community, which is a precious gem for all of Lane County. I wanted to share a brief introduction to who we are as LCC EA. We are the faculty union representing the part-time and full-time faculty at LCC. Currently, there are approximately 270 part-time faculty and 188 full-time faculty instructors. We are instructors, teaching credit courses, as well as adult education and English for English language learners, student health clinic nurses, librarians, athletic coaches, instructional designers, athletic trainer, and counselors. As a faculty union, we have very high membership rates. 95% of our full-time faculty are members of the union, and we have the highest part-time faculty membership rate in the state. These rates are higher than prior to the Janus U.S. Supreme Court ruling that took place in 2018. More than 80 faculty members serve on our union committees and in union roles, and that is a total of 40% of our full-time faculty serving on committees or union roles, and 17% of all faculty are engaged in our union committees and activities. I'm going to also share a little bit of background about the LCC budget. The audit was just released for FY '24 in June, and the news is very good. After 26.6% enrollment growth over the past three years, the general fund is stable and has increased more than $1 million over the past two years from FY '23 to FY '25. I have, by the way, provided a copy of this report to Nicole, and there are a number of graphs and charts in the report, and that will be posted on Board Docs as well. We are concerned, however, that according to the audit for FY '24, only 33.5% of LCC expenditures went to instruction, which includes not only faculty, but also all managers, classified employees in academic departments, as well as materials and services. Similarly, spending on student services was only 11%. This will be exacerbated by the 9.7% increase in management positions in next year's budget, bringing the total up to 79 positions, when 72 is the historic maximum on record at LCC, as well as the inclusion of $675,000 of unspecified program and service cuts. In addition, I'm sharing a number of resources for the Board of Education, and Jerry, we're here, I believe, and he's going to be passing out a couple of them. And one of those is the state statute that outlines the authority and powers of community college boards, that outlines the importance of the role of community college boards in providing public oversight and prescribing the educational program, establishing student services, and so on. Some of the sections are highlighted for your reference. In addition, I will note that Board Policy 4350 provides that the board shall approve all major academic vocational and technical programs of study, degrees, certificates, and diplomas, and approve major substantive changes in the college's mission, policies, and programs. Of course, the changes to the LPN program should have gone to the board for a decision, just like any of the program cuts that are proposed, those which are still unspecified, which we don't know what they will be for next year. But those do need to go to the Board of Education to be compliant with board policy, as well as state statute. Some examples of programs and services that have been eliminated or permanently suspended through a vote of the Board of Education include the hospitality program, respiratory care, two counseling positions in 2017, the auto body and paint program, the electronics program, the faculty institutional research position, and the list goes on. These include votes by two current board members, as well as numerous recent board members. Examples of programs and services that were temporarily suspended, paused, or put on hiatus through a vote of the board, similar to the LPN program, include the culinary and the manufacturing program, both in 2022, both of which include votes by current and recent board members. And examples of programs and services that were up for reduction or elimination but were retained through a vote of the board include early childhood education in 2017 and medical assisting in 2015. As board members, it is incumbent upon you to make the tough decisions, to take the votes, and to fulfill your duty to the people of Lane County who elected you to provide public oversight. This is fundamental to our democracy, which is ever more fragile on the national landscape. I urge you to rise above that here at the local level and participate in the board decision-making to ensure that cuts do not take place outside the public view without a board vote and without full consideration for the community. I'll share a brief update regarding some notes about labor relations and some additional LCC EA updates. Faculty continue to advocate for more productive labor relations, and I've included a link to formal letters from LCC EA officers to the Board of Education in my report. We're concerned about total expenditures on outside attorney fees, which continue to increase from less than $20,000 in fiscal year '21 to $267,000 in FY '25, only through May 5th so far. So there, and that figure will increase once we get the final figure. So that adds up to a total of more than $737,000 since FY '21, and more than $610,000 in the last three fiscal years, creating undue pressure on the budget and detracting from the mission. While faculty are seeking to improve conditions for students and address safety, create a more inclusive campus, and provide for essentials for faculty working conditions to meet student needs, we're gravely disappointed to see the administration's approach in bargaining. You've heard from many of my faculty colleagues about this issue tonight. I'm also sharing a document that provides background information about faculty surveys and data and comparative information with other institutions. Last but not least, I would like to report that we conducted officer elections in June, and we look forward to welcoming our incoming officers on September 1st. Don Easton, who is here, CIT faculty member, has been elected as vice president for transfer faculty. Jerry Minahan, who just passed out some documents to you from Cooperative Education, has been elected as vice president for career technical faculty. April Myler, nursing faculty member, has been elected as vice president at large. And congratulations to our officers who were elected for another term. Rosa Lopez, the Career Pathways Coordinator, the Vice President for Learning Advancement. Peggy Oberstaller, who is here, Health Faculty Member, Vice President for Part-Time Faculty. Wendy Rollinson, who is here, Math Faculty Member and Treasurer for LCC EA. This summer, we're engaged in a number of activities with our fellow unions throughout the county and the state. We are sending a cohort again to the summer school at the U of O, the U of O Labor and Education Research Center, summer school in coordination with the AFL-CIO. And three of our faculty members, April Myler, Wendy Simmons, and myself, serve on the Oregon Education Association Community College Council as statewide elected leaders, and will be focused on a number of events throughout the month of August, including strategic planning, legislative advocacy, bargaining and organizing, mutual support, and growth of new local affiliates within the Community College Council. And on a final note, I would like to share our LCC EA mission, which is that we engage in collective action to ensure an equitable learning and working environment and advocate for social justice and systemic change for the public good. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to the LCC EF report. That's going to be provided by Tammy Hill.
Hi, I'm Tammy Hill. I am LCC EF's president, as you said. Welcome. I was going to say welcome old and new, but I didn't use the word old, so welcome previous and new board members.
Oh. Oh, okay.
Very careful with my words. Okay, so I ask myself, why am I standing here? What am I asking for? What's the purpose of asking? Then you look at the top of our contract and says it's a contract between LCC EF and the Board of Education. So what I want to say is, we, the bargaining position that we're at right now, we are not even past the beginning stages. We are, we've met with the college at least five times. It's stopped because we really want Zoom to be available to our members. It's important they're able to hear about their stuff, things that are going to affect them firsthand, and be part of it. Reasons we were given that the college doesn't want to allow Zoom, outside observers, boarding, outside noise. And so we offered to do a webcast, so there's no noise, there's nothing, it's just listening. And that was not good enough. The college agreed to allow employees who have ADA accommodations to attend the meetings via Zoom, or if they're at another location, not this one. So we did a survey, and it's not closed yet, but it went out late yesterday to the members about who's able to attend Zoom, who's able to attend in person, just to get a feel if we're pulling in the right direction. And 72% can be in person, that's it. And 91% can join on Zoom. I mean, it seems like a no-brainer to me, and I don't understand the reasoning of why I don't understand the big deal. We did it before, we could do it again. We asked, one of the questions we asked the members was, do you think that the union should move forward, just sign the beginning agreement there, the ground rules, and move forward and start bargaining? And over 70% said no, they want us to keep pushing, so that's what we're doing. Some things I'm a little, well, first of all, reasons some of them can't attend is because some of them only have 30-minute lunches. And then I just was informed that in order to use their whole, to attend the meetings the whole time, they have to put vacation time down for the other portion of it, even for an hour, which is ridiculous. The other one is the childcare people, they can't come over unless they get somebody to fill their class. So they have to get a substitute, call one in, take their place, so they can come and sit. Some people said that there's just too much work to take out the time. When they play it in the background, they can listen, and that's typically what people do. So the ground rules right now, I want to say, is also a little ridiculous. Last year, we had, there were seven ground rules to agree upon. This year, we had to start with 22 rules on three pages. And the last page had an attorney's name at the bottom. I'm sure it was left there on accident, which, you know, that's fine. However, everything is changing, so we are assuming it has something to do with that, but we don't really care. They need to be able to be part of their lives and hear what's going on. And I think it's very important, and we're not going to budge. They've refused to budge. We're all at a standstill now. And I think, since it's a contract between us and the board, and we need your help. We need to allow our members to be part of this group, an active part of their future. They don't have to talk, but they want to listen, they want to hear it. Otherwise, what's to hide? Why not allow Zoom? It seems ridiculous. So I also want to say, thank you for visiting. I've been here almost 10 years. I worked in this building for seven and a half of those, and never have I been stopped just to visit by somebody if I wasn't already working in the boardroom. So thank you for that. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Now we'll move on to action items. The first one is in regards to community organization appointments. Is all right if we pull up the document, just so we can see the full list of the organizations? Essentially, a board member serves as liaison to these different organizations. It ranges from the KLCC to the Foundation, to ElCog, and so forth. You'll see the, in the document, thank you so much, the organization, the current representative, and the meeting schedule and when they meet. I just, we want to do two things. First off, to see if individuals are wanting to remain in those positions, and if not, to see if we can go ahead and fill that with another board member, and also for the vacant position, to have that refilled. I saw a hand up, so I'm going to go ahead and call it Zach. Go ahead.
Yeah, I think it's really important that the representative to the Oregon Community College Association be in the leadership of the board, so I would recommend it would be Austin or Jerry. Though, as you, Austin, I believe you are already represented on the OCCA board as a previous president.
Exactly, yes. So I retain the role as past president, which serves as the executive in the executive committee and on the board. So that still allows us to have another board representative to be at OCCA.
So the representative of OCCA needs to coordinate closely with the president, and so I think it would make sense for Jerry to be the OCCA rep instead of myself this coming year.
Okay, gotcha. First off, are you interested, Zach? No, no, the, so Zach is saying he's pulling back from the Oregon Community College Association one. Are you, or would you be willing to accept that? He recommended you.
How often do they meet?
They meet. Meetings are held generally the first Friday of October, December, February, April, and May. So every, and it's usually, yeah, exactly, and it depends on certain things. Yeah, it also depends, oh, well, it can be virtual, too. So, yeah, and it usually runs from 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM. Once a quarter. Yeah, it's pretty much once a quarter. Yeah.
8:00 AM to 12:00 PM?
Yes, correct.
Well, does anyone else have any interest in that?
Seeing that? All right, excellent. So we'll go ahead and add Jerry Rust's name. I wanted to ask Kevin Altecker, are you wanting to remain in ElCog?
I'm not, and my availability this coming year is probably going to be less. So I am not going to be volunteering for any of these liaison positions.
Okay. I really appreciate that, Kevin. Thank you for communicating that. Anyone interested in the ElCog, Lane Council of Governments?
I can fill in if I need to.
Excellent. Julie Weisman?
Yep, I've only had one meeting.
Excellent. From that conversation, Steve, you're still interested in the Foundation?
Yeah, I've only had a single meeting with them last month, so I've only barely started with that.
Yeah, excellent, great. Anyone interested in the KLCC Public Radio Foundation? We've had two board members represent two different organizations before. So, yeah.
Can I suggest if maybe a couple of us could take that and tag-team it? Sure. I want to support KLCC.
Okay. Gotcha.
I'm, yeah, I'm interested in that.
Okay, gotcha. So you would.
You said you'd do it?
Yeah, yeah, correct. Are you wanting to do it as well?
Well, no, if he's ready to go, that's great.
You ready to go? Excellent. Just a board member, Jesse Maldonado, for KLCC Public Radio Foundation. Yeah, and I'm currently on the Lane Economic Committee, ElCog. I'd be happy I'd be happy to remain in that position, but if anyone else is interested in that position, it essentially allows for economic recommendations to the ElCog board. And yeah, it's, it's really amazing, just the conversations we've had, especially with recent turbulent times from the federal government. So is anyone else interested? Otherwise, I can-
How often does that meet? Once a month?
Oh, yeah, so that meets the second Monday of each month at 11:30.
And that's the LEC?
Yeah, yeah, so it's, yeah, LEC. So it's essentially a subcommittee, it's a committee of-
Of ElCog. And I'd like to drop in as a guest and have you-
Oh, you'd like to shadow me, and then we can change it later? Okay, yeah, we could. So for now, though, would you like for me just to retain the position? Exactly, and then we can switch, change it at a different time?
I'd like to be a guest sometime. I'm very interested in that committee.
Fantastic. And if that works for the board? Yep, excellent. Great, so with that, we now just need, oh, are we able to edit the document and put the names in? Okay, no worries. Now you have to make me remember. So-
I moved that we appoint Julie Wiseman to ElCog, Austin Fullnagy to the Lane Economic Committee, Jerry Russ, the Oregon Community College Association, Steve Mybttall to the Lane Community College Foundation, and Jesse Maldonado to the KLCC Public Radio Foundation.
Excellent, is there a second? We got a second for Julie. Excellent, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Any abstention? All right, moving on to the board calendar. So you have this document, and if we're able to pull it up, just so everyone can see it, because, and I appreciate you, you guys are rock stars.
Not unless, Steve.
Just want to make sure that the dates are working for everyone. And I believe we did a check of any major holidays, religious obligations, and so forth. Okay.
I'm just going to red flag now, in the middle of May, I'm going to have City of Eugene Budget Committee meetings, and will likely be doubled up in May for at least one, if not more, the multiple of those meetings.
Yeah, and I believe same, yeah, gotcha, gotcha. Yeah, yeah, let's, let's have a broader conversation about that, because I definitely want you to fulfill your obligations in both capacities. So, yeah, we'll have further conversations about that. But in the meantime, though, especially with like scheduling time breaks, you know, on those-
To approve the agenda, or the budget, the calendar as presented.
Excellent. Maybe we have a second?
Yeah, I can ask a question after.
Are you sure?
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
Okay, totally. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, great. Any discussion?
I think I just got my question answered, so no.
Oh, fantastic. Good, great. All right, it's been moved and seconded for the adoption of the calendar. Any further, any discussion, and then, sorry, any further discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, excellent. Moving on to discussion items, next is the Bond Oversight Committee Annual Report.
I believe we have the-
My apologies, I do have that in my notes right here. We will move on to the Ethics Training and Affirmation. President Bulger, would you mind introducing the speakers?
Yes, we'll have Brett Roulette walk through very quickly, a slide deck. This is what we do every single year. We're doing this a little bit earlier this year. And what you'll have in front of you is the board policy, it's the Code of Ethics, and you also have a document, the affirmation, that you have received it, and we will ask you to sign and date that. And if you leave that just at your, at your seat, then we'll pick those up. Brett?
Thank you, and good evening once again. Have not mastered this new structure yet. It's very beautiful and has a lot of features, goes up and down, but not sure how to place stuff on it yet. My job this evening is to give you a real brief overview of the ethics laws in Oregon, remind you of your board policy each year according to Board Policy 2715. The board is supposed to review your, your Code of Ethics, the board policy, and then sign a statement of affirmation. So that's what I'm here this evening, is to just give you some reminders. I know our newest members to the board are no strangers to public service, so I'm sure you've gone through ethics trainings plenty of times. Board Policy 2715, and as you look at the Board Policy Library, you'll notice we no longer have three-digit board policies and four-digit policies, they're all in the same place. So Board Policy 2715 really sets your Code of Ethics, real brief overview. You, you all kind of know this, and some of you took an oath this evening. You're here to serve in the best interests of our community. Some of you represent, or were elected by zones, but what makes Lane Community College unique in Oregon is you were elected by the voters of the entire district. We're the only community college in Oregon that elects members from zones that way, and that's because you represent the entire college district. Public input's very important, you have board policies that say you're going to listen to the public input, all public input, and use that in your decision-making. Your job is to prevent conflicts of interest and declare them when appropriate, make sure you communicate with fellow board members appropriately, and maintain confidentiality of executive sessions. Board Policy 2715 also states what to do when you have complaints of misconduct and how the board should handle those. So Oregon Government Ethics Laws. Board members are considered public officials, you're subject to all of the ethics laws set by the state. There is a fabulous guide put out by the Oregon Government Ethics Commission that is available, and there's a link to it at the end of this presentation. Public officials, you are personally responsible for compliance. Ignorance is not a defense, so it's up to you to make sure that you're in compliance. Key concepts, board members, like I just said, you'll be held personally liable if you violate ethics laws. You cannot use your positions as board members to gain financially, that's for you, your family, and new this year, members of your household, they don't have to be related to you. And also, you are prohibited from accepting gifts from any entity that may have business before the college if the value is over $50. It was strange, but when I oversaw the college's marketing for a period of time, received a lot of invites to go to football games and things like that, that were well over the $50. I know they like me as an individual, but I'm sure that that wasn't why they were inviting me to the games. I am fun, though, if you want to take me to it. So conflicts of interest, there's two types of conflicts of interest that you need to be aware of. There's potential conflicts and actual conflicts. Potential conflicts, that is when an action you take as a board could affect the financial interest of yourself, your relatives, new this year, the member of your household, or a business that you or relatives associated with. An actual conflict is when there is an actual conflict, where a family member, yourself, could benefit, a member of your household, or a business that you own. These are examples, and they're pulled right from the Oregon Government Ethics Guide, that just kind of show you, you know, if the school, if we were planning to build a new gym, and the board was voting on contracts, a board member would be met with a potential conflict. It's tough for me to read that, it's right on the screen, and I'm trying to read it to you. Potential conflict of interest when participating in actions to develop bid criteria could be a potential if, say, you had a son who was part of a construction company that would benefit from the contract. An actual conflict would be if they would have a financial benefit from you approving the contract. If your neighbor was the person that owned the business that would benefit, that's not a conflict, that's just a neighbor who could benefit. So handling conflicts, potential and actual conflicts need to be announced prior to deliberating and voting. When a, when a potential conflict exists, a board member can still vote. If there is an actual conflict, a board member is not allowed to participate in the dialogue, discussion, or vote unless there are only four of you at a meeting, and that one person is needed for action to take place. That is the only time someone with an actual conflict can vote. Oregon Public Meeting Law, Oregon Public Meeting Law is designed to make sure that meetings are open, transparent, the public has an opportunity to view and participate. And I don't know if you have any questions about what a public meeting is, you have board policies that spell out what a work session is, what a regular meeting is, what an executive session is, and a special meeting. And then at the very end, there's resources here with links to the various, the ethics guide that I mentioned, both the administrative rule and the state statute on ethics, and then some compliance and sanction rules, if you decide that you're not going to file them. Any questions? Yes, sir.
So I have two cookies in front of me, and I wanted to ask, are they worth $50?
I know nothing about the cookies.
Awesome, no, no, and so anyway, yeah, no, thank you so much for this presentation, and yeah, no, I think it's really critical and important. Any questions from the board? All right, seeing none, we'll, individual board members can sign their documents, and we will collect those at the end. Perfect, great. All right. Now moving on to the regular part of the agenda, thank you for reminding me of the amendment there. Moving on to Bond Oversight Annual Report for President Bulger.
Thanks, thank you. This is an annual report from the Bond Oversight Committee. The Bond Oversight Committee was formed coming out of the May 2020 bond. It was a promise to the voters that we would have a citizen bond oversight committee. Chair Phil Barnhart is, is, is certainly the person who is running that, that, that committee. And I'm going to have Cara give their report, they give the board an annual report. I hope that you read it, it was actually a very flattering report. And so Cara is here mostly to give, to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, President Bulgers, members of the board. President Bulger covered it pretty well. This is from the, the committee itself, not written by the college membership, but the Chair Phil Barnhart was very complimentary of the staff, so I have to give a shout out to, you know, Jennifer Hayward and Thomas Goodhue, who are here to actually talk about details, if you'd like to have that discussion, the staff and the committee. We appreciate all the work that all of them are doing, and without all of that collaborative process, we wouldn't be able to get all this accomplished. If I have a few highlights, and you'll have an opportunity, if you haven't seen the new buildings, but we have the ITech Building that was finished this year, the Health Professions Building, we began work on Building 16, which was part of, if you heard about the water shutdown, that we, they remodeled some of the water valves, accomplished some pretty large things. We have some pretty large projects in the works, which is the remodeling of the baseball field to have that in place. So we're really excited to bring the baseball team home to work on the fields at LCC, which has been a few years. So there is a lot of context, a lot of information in this so far, you know, it's $120 million bond that was approved in, voter-approved in 2020, and we've spent about $96 million of that so far. We do have some state grants, we talked about capital construction money from the state, we've received over, just over $16 million so far. I thought I heard a question. Anyway, so there's a lot of, a lot of things working. Is there any particular questions or any discussion?
Any questions in regards to the report? All right. I first got started with Lane Community College being on the Bond Oversight Committee. So I want to thank the Bond Oversight Committee for their due diligence, their hard work, the voters for bringing the bond together and to bring this committee together. We've presented on it, Dr. Bulger and I presented on it on a national level, talking about the Bond Oversight Committee, as well as Brett, actually, yeah. And, yeah, so anyway, this is a really amazing work that they do, and I, I want to thank them for their dedication and time. Any other questions or? All right, seeing none, thank you so much. We'll move, we'll move on to the Strategic Plan Update. Dr. Bulger?
Yes, thank you. This is also an annual report on the, the strategic plan, and we really just ran out of time last year, or else this would have been done in the fiscal year last year. So we are presenting it now, this, what we have is a five-year strategic plan. The strategic plan is the plan that I inherited in 2022, and we're going to give you an update, which is our annual update, as I mentioned. And we plan to do a mid, 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 sort of mid-period report. So this is a five-year plan, and so we're going to give you a mid-year report next year. So I'll have Dr. Tinkum come up and talk about the strategic plan.
Good evening, President Bulger, Chair Fullnagy, and members of the board. I'm Dr. Shelley Tinkum, I'm the vice, I am the Vice President of Academic Affairs. I'd like to ask my colleague to join me tonight in presenting, Dr. Keith Comer, he is our Director of Institutional Research and Institutional Effectiveness, and he'll be here to help assist with any detailed questions. Today's presentation highlights Lane's progress on the 2022-2027 strategic plan, with a particular focus on this year's achievements. This evening, on this presentation itself, we're only going to be talking about four of the plan's goals. The narrative report that you received offers a more in-depth analysis of the, of our progress thus far, and talks about all of the goals. But just in the interest of time, we're just going to highlight four major areas. And we kindly ask that you hold your questions until the end of the presentation, so if you can, just jot down your question, and then we'll move forward. So Brett, can you advance the slide, please? Okay, so here, as President Bulger, Bulger mentioned, we're on a five-year cycle. Right now, we are in 2025. We will be giving you a mid-cycle report next winter or late fall, and then we will begin working on the next strategic plan next January. And I should note that this strategic plan was approved in December of 2021. So can you go to the next slide, please? So this plan has six goals, I'm not going to read them to you, you can read them, I'll give you a few seconds to read, and there are corresponding objectives to each one of those goals. So there are six overarching goals, and then 46 specific objectives. The president also provides priorities to the college that is, that are board-approved, and they help focus activities that are necessary and realistic and align with the strategic plan that's mentioned in the report in greater detail, and these are enrollment, fiscal condition, and institutional climate. Can you go on to Slide 4, please? This slide shows some enrollment data. The Goal 1 is largely around improving diversity, equity, inclusion, and student success and achievement. And this specific objective, Objective 1.1, is about increasing admissions retention and completion of BIPOC students. So what you see here is simply some enrollment data of headcounts. Headcounts, and I know we have new board members, headcounts are this enrollment data, and a headcount is an actual student, so by head, and we are reporting unduplicated headcounts. What that means is if a student enrolls in the fall, in the spring, and also in the winter, we only count them once. And so what this shows here is enrollment has increased across nearly all demographic groups since AY22, as you can see with those arrows, with the exception of international students and Pacific Islanders. As mentioned in the report, last year, we qualified as an emerging Hispanic-serving institution, and you can see that, that the share of Latino students has increased. You can go to the next slide. The next slide also has to do with Goal 1, which is about improving DEI and student access and achievement. This one is specifically Objective 1.6, and this is about investing in programs which contribute to a highly skilled and diverse pull to the regional workforce. And here, we highlighted the programs that we have either approved this academic year or that we have launched. These initiatives directly support a more diverse and skilled workforce in Lane County, and just highlighting the last one there, that's the LEAP Dual Enrollment Program. This is the program that will be offering Lane County High School students tuition-free courses, which will launch this fall, and that has a very specific- courses, which will launch this fall, and that has a very specific focus on rural students. The next slide, please? The next slide has to do with increasing enrollment. What this states here in this slide, enrollment is duplicated. That means that if a student enrolls in more than one term, they're going to be counted more than once. And this shows that the total number of enrollment by term over the academic year. As Dr. Bulger reported, our enrollment has been increasing these last several years. Our FTE, our full-time equivalent enrollment, is up 9% from last year. So overall, what this slide shows is that enrollment is steadily rising across most groups except veterans. And I don't know, Keith, do you want to, you might be able to speak more eloquently than I on this, on why you think that might be the case with veterans?
Yes, what we know from basically the service components right now is we've seen a decrease in both the active duty and reserve components across the nation. Roughly a drop of 150,000 military members over the past five years, and since close Iraq, Afghanistan peaks. As a consequence, there are a few veterans that will be coming back out into the communities. Also, the military has substantially lowered entrance requirements, meaning, for example, lower thresholds for high school intake, lower threshold for GD intakes. And as a consequence, there is a bit of a less qualified, educationally speaking, force at the moment. And consequently, we're seeing a decline in veterans engagement with both community colleges and universities across the sector, subsequent to return to civilian life.
And let's go ahead and go to the last, the next slide. Goal Three has to do with increasing student success. And what this slide here shows is that retention is up across the board. Just briefly, I want to explain why is retention so important and what is it? Retention is a ratio that measures the number of students who start in a term and then return. And the two indicators that we use are fall-to-winter retention and fall-to-fall. Both are very highly associated with student completion. And what this says is that fall-to-winter retention reached, has recently reached 77% in winter 2025, and all fall-to-fall rates have been increasing as well. This has been a point of pride for the institution, and there's many numbers of reasons for this. One is the retention via relationship program that we have been, that we have implemented that is highly involving faculty with registration efforts. Also, we reported some completion data on this slide over to the right. This is completion by ethnicities, by ethnicity. Of note, there are more Latinx students completing than in previous years. And if, and then you can basically see by the arrows how things are increasing or decreasing. Most are increased, most have increased or grown, and there's been some slight decreases as well, but they're not necessarily significant. But the one that is interesting story, and this is separated by certificate and degrees, is the Hispanic and Latino completion numbers have increased, and we haven't included on the most recent data because it's not yet finalized. Did you want anything, anything to add there, Keith? Okay. And then if we go on to the next slide, this slide has to do, this is Goal Six. This is about identifying strategic infrastructure investments, and this specific objective is about recruiting and retraining diverse and stable workforce. And the way to understand this slide is the first graph, the one on the left, this shows the percentage change of reported ethnicity among staff. So zero shows no change. And so where you see some change is with Hispanic-Latino staff, there's been a 4.3% increase there. And then also, all the way on the bottom, there are fewer staff members are reporting non-specified. And Keith, you really made this observation, that this may be reflective of the work that the college is doing to promote a more welcoming environment. Staff may simply feel more comfortable with reporting their ethnicity, and this is overall a very good sign that we can, that that number has, has decreased at that percentage. Over on the right side, the second graph has to do with the numbers of staff. Again, zero, that zero shows no change. Where we see, there hasn't been really a significant or dramatic change among most groups, with the exception of part-time faculty. And one thing to note is that when you do, are in a period of growing enrollment that we've been experiencing, many departments then begin recruiting, part-time recruitment, part-time faculty, and then that full-time faculty tends to lag until enrollment stabilizes. And bearing in mind that the full-time faculty hiring process often takes about a year to complete. Anything else there?
I think I just reinforced that sense of that shift in, in part-time is really indicative of the fact that these are the first three years in the last 15 for which LCC has shown stable growth. Hasn't been dramatic growth, but it's been stable. And consequently, looking for that shift in the contracted full-time faculty rate will lag behind that measure until then it's stabilized.
And then I believe, and we have, just want to, just say the Office of Planning and Institutional Effectiveness with, and institutional research with Dr. Comer overseas will continue to monitor our progress, and will be preparing that mid-cycle strategic plan report that Dr. Bulger mentioned. That'll probably be late fall or early winter when those numbers come in. And we are in the process of laying the groundwork for the development of the next strategic plan, and that will begin in January. And so we welcome your questions and observations.
Excellent. Any questions from the board? Go ahead.
I do have something that may seem kind of in the weeds, but I do think it matters. There is a mixture of using Latino and Latinx throughout this, and there was definitely places where it said Latino and places where it didn't. As a Latino, nobody in my family uses Latinx. We're not monoliths by any means. So I mean, that's just my personal experience. I just, regardless of whether, probably not a board policy, but like, if we're going to use one, we should use one throughout and just keep it that way. So that was just something I picked. Sorry, that was super like in the details, but something I did pick up.
Thank you for that.
Appreciate that. Any other questions? Otherwise, I have a couple of questions. All right. First off, in the, in the mid-report, what are some things that we're kind of looking for in that mid-report? Or any like patterns or anything that we want to just keep an eye out for?
What we're going to be doing with the, the mid-cycle strategic plan report is going to be very detailed. So we're going to be measuring all of the objectives. There are 43 of them. And so the goal is to create a data-driven report, so then we can measure then our progress. Or, you know, see if we might have to reevaluate. And so that will then prepare us for moving forward with our January discussions.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, actually, yeah, you actually kind of answered my second question, which was great. Thank you. Yeah, appreciate that. Anything else? Any other questions?
Excellent report. Thank you so much for your work on this.
It's the first time I saw it.
Thank you.
Very impressive.
Absolutely, yeah. All right, next, we're going to be moving on to the Academic Affairs update. Dr. Bulger?
Yes, I will just introduce all of the updates, and so we'll pick just a few minutes each, and we'll start with Academic Affairs and move to Human Resources, and then end with Strategic, Student Affairs.
Great. So of course, you received this report as we were finishing up with commencement. So I just wanted to take a moment to recognize and still celebrate our recent graduates. There were 1,272 in this year's graduating class, and that represented 20 countries. These graduates earned 1,977 associate degrees and certificates. 57% were first-generation college-educated. 53 identify as female. The average age of this year's graduate is 80, is 28 years old. The youngest graduate is 17, and the two oldest were 65. 24 graduates were under the age of 19. 41% of the class of 2025 received more than one or degree or certificate. And nine graduates earned an associate degree in the same year that they graduated from high school. So I just wanted to, it's only been a few weeks, but I wanted to officially just recognize all of the students' work, and then also the faculty and the staff that helped get these students through to their goals and cross the finish line. So I, with that, I know it's getting late. I am going to go ahead and pass this on to my colleagues.
Good evening, and thanks for the opportunity to share this update. In Human Resources, we're working on a tech adoption for applicant tracking system that will improve the way that we onboard our new employees, that will speed up their access to technology and accounts on campus and get them up to speed quicker. And so we think that will improve their experience, as well as the departments that are receiving them. I want to take the opportunity to welcome you all to our Classified Appreciation event that happens on July 17th from 2:00 to 5:00. We'll be hosting that in Bristol Square, as well as in the Center Building. Please come by and share an ice cream sundae and some lemonade and some relaxing time with our classified employees as we show them appreciation. And that ends my report. Thank you.
Good evening, President Bulger, SGA President Hampton, and Board of Education. For Student Affairs, we have a few highlights. First of all, I'm going to mention, Mr. Hampton, thanks for your update, and there's a few things on there that I've written down and we're going to be communicating about, okay? All right. So a few things. The, first of all, tying into commencement, we had a group that's been working about nine months on this, including Randy, Brett, Becca Mailey, Megan, Carl, Nicole Vickers, Alex Crane, Terry Holloway, Chris Henderson, Lisa Rupp, Desiree Woodruff, Liz Pratt, James Walegambay, Jenna McCully as well. They did a lot of work about nine months went into that. We had a debrief meeting to talk about what we're going to do next year, and I just want to say they did a fantastic job. And I've got to also commend our colleagues in facilities. There was a built, like a campus-wide shutdown for water repairs and everything, and they did a great job of communicating that out to everybody. However, we still kept services going in Building One of our, you know, our enrollment teams and everything, so we were still there for students, so they could get what they needed to do during that time. For, this is as much, I don't know if you recall in our past meetings, I've talked about the College Achievement Coach Model, which is new here. We started these College Achievement Coaches training in January, and we're getting the point this summer where they're going to be working with all of those new fall students coming in to Lane Community College. And college achievement coaches, they are being trained in first-term advising, registration, admissions, financial aid, other support services, including they know more about career pathways and the areas in Building Four. And so they'll reach out to faculty, and basically what they are, these college achievement coaches, they get a full cohort of students, they're going to get about 200 students each, and they're going to be kind of a one-stop-shop of person that can connect with the students and help them navigate their way through the college in that first year. And this is a goal to increase retention of our students that are coming in here, especially when you hear the 51% of the graduating classes, first generation, that's when you know they need the extra help. Couple of other things. International programs, we mentioned 20 free international students attended the ceremony, and they've gone to places like Chico State, University of Oregon, Middlesex University in Dubai, and other places. And then a number of them also chose to apply for optional practical training, which is a year-long stay in the US where they can continue their studies and work at the same time, so in the US. So it's a great program, and a lot of them do that. I'm going to keep it brief to that and just say, welcome to the new board members. Look forward to work.
Excellent. Thank you all for those reports. All right, now we're moving on to information reports. In your packet, you see a variety of different reports. Do we have any questions? I have a few questions, but I want to make sure if there's anyone else that had any questions. All right. One thing I had, actually, it's more of a statement, the Human Resource Employee Dashboard. I just wanted to kind of just put emphasis on that. It's a great report, and I really appreciate putting that report together. It's really informative of various things that, as far as, as far as representation and so forth. So I just wanted to simply state that. My question was in regards to facilities, which is in regards to Building 12. I just wanted to make sure, I know we discussed Building 12, and more specifically, like also moving public safety out of Building 12. Do we have a home for them in a different facility? I just want, I think that was one thing I forgot to ask in the previous meeting.
Point of order, Chair. I really, I think it's decorum to direct the questions to the president. Have her ask her staff who can answer.
Yes. Dr. Bulger, I just had a question about Building 12 in regards to the public safety facilities and where they will be housed during the building.
It's, it's a, it's a great question, and thank you for doing that. I appreciate you doing that. So Cara, and if you want Jennifer to, to respond, but.
Yes, that would be great if Jennifer can respond.
Excellent.
Yes, we've identified Building 15, which is currently vacant, and we have an architectural team, which you approved today, working on.
Yep.
The design.
Perfect. Great, thank you so much. All right, those are all the questions. I have any other questions?
I don't know when to bring this up, but something was raised in the public comment about the ability to use Zoom and maybe a web to participate, listen to the, when is the right time to bring that up?
Yeah, that's actually, usually we would bring those up in like board questions and comments, which is actually one of the last, it's one of the closing items there. But before I go to closing, though, any further questions about information? All right, no further questions?
I am, I'm hoping your answer to trustee Rust is the comments that's usually read at the beginning of our meeting is that the board does not comment back and back about public comment. We have that statement as a rule.
I'm sorry. Let's, all right. So, so first off, he was just asking a question of when can we discuss this? And I think that was, that's the question, right? So, Zach?
I believe that. I think we should follow up on that question after this meeting.
Correct.
Chair Phil Nagy, I'd be happy to take the question. Generally, questions are directed to me, and I communicate with the board.
Yep, correct. All right, any further questions or comments? Jesse? Oh, that was, oh, my apologies, I saw the hand there. Julie?
I just wanted to comment or actually, oh, sorry, on the non-traditional revenue report. I looked at that, that looks really, really exciting and encouraging that we have potential access. Is there anything that you would like to like call out for it that, that you want us to kind of hear outside of this report that I invite you to just like offer it for right now?
I appreciate that. I was excited about the report, too, and I think I'll turn it over to Cara, because it was, it's really exciting to see the lease arrangements and how much revenue that's generating. And so Cara, would you like to talk a little bit about that for just a minute?
Sure, I can give you a couple of highlights on that. Yeah, the rental lease income is exciting, and as we shift through different leases and change how our space is used, that number will go up and down. But that, as you can see, that's a, that's a good amount of money, 1.4 million, and we also use that for some of our facilities renovation, and it also helps the college. One of the things, while it, under gifts and donations, one of the things I will highlight, it doesn't necessarily benefit the college, but it does benefit KLCC, which you'll learn as you go through that, is their membership revenue is, is some of the higher years that they've seen. And they've got a lot of active work. So those are two areas. Of course, federal revenues are always exciting to see that stabilize, especially in this climate, so something for us to keep an eye on. But to see those pretty steady numbers as you look at the last few years is, is a good thing.
Right, thank you so much. Those are all.
Excellent, thank you so much. See?
Yeah, back to the board calendar for the upcoming year. I was trying to check quickly as we were getting ready to vote on Jewish holidays. They sometimes get missed. I saw that Yom Kippur falls on October. I, I saw that Yom Kippur falls on October one, which is, happens to be the first Wednesday of October, which we would normally meet. And I just wanted to double check whether we had moved that meeting date to the.
We did, September thirty eighth.
Yep.
Sorry, didn't, I was trying to check and look and appreciate whoever it was that that did that check and moved the meetings appropriately. I really appreciate that.
Absolutely appreciate that, yes. Excellent. Any further board member questions or comments?
Are we on board member questions or comments?
Oh, yeah, that's where we were. Yeah, yeah, but.
I thought we were on the information report.
Oh, no, no, no. We, we asked twice if there was any questions. I had a few questions, but, but yeah, if there's more questions, I'd.
Well, actually, I just had a board member comment that I.
Yeah, please. Yeah, yeah.
So I was waiting.
Oh, yeah, yeah, of course. Yeah, go ahead.
I was asking that question from the report.
Yeah, understood.
Did my order here.
Absolutely.
Unfortunately, I'm waiting for Microsoft Word to actually pop open on my, ah, here we go. All right, I just had, I prepared something for you. I wanted to take this opportunity as a newly elected trustee during my first meeting of my new term to thank everyone for their support and encouragement during my campaign. Thank you. I look forward to working on behalf of Lane County and for all the current and future students over the next four years. I also want to extend a warm welcome to Jerry and to Jesse, our new trustees, and also Club J, the three Js now on the board. So there we go. I look forward to getting to know both of you and working together to ensure student success and financial sustainability. I'd also like to take this opportunity to invite everyone that's listening, especially those dedicated to sustainability of Lane Community College, to join me in learning more about the Board of Education. I encourage you to make your voice heard and think critically as we navigate the challenges facing our community and LCC. In this time of uncertainty and particularly around federal and state funding, sanctuary policies and equity issues, having accurate and up to date information is more important than ever. There was lots of confusing and sometimes even misleading information that I had to navigate. And having access to facts, context, and complete information is absolutely critical for my stewardship of LCC and responsibility as a Board of Education trustee. I personally follow a simple rule that helps me. If something doesn't sound right or feel right, question it. I can be annoying sometimes, but I believe it is my job to question everything that doesn't seem right, to seek clarity and to always act in the best interest of the students and LCC. I tell you all this to invite you to join me in keeping yourselves informed, to ask questions, seek answers like I did. What comes before the Board of Education is all online. Our meetings, committee meetings are streamed live. In fact, my wife texted me and said she was watching while we were doing this. I had to laugh. Just search the Lane County, Lane, just search for Lane Community College on YouTube and you'll find the channel. You could also use the search function, I didn't even know it was there, on the lanec.edu website and find just about anything you want about the Board of Education and LCC. I'm very interested in hearing from you. Your voice is important part of our diverse community. I want to hear from students, local and regional businesses, community nonprofits, arts and sports organization, families, everyone. Our community is huge and it has very distinct and unique communities. Our county is huge, not community. We are not just Eugene, and we're not just Springfield. We have tens of thousands of folks in smaller cities and in rural and coastal communities. I mean, forty seven hundred square miles. I want to hear from you. The College and Board of Education is here to meet the needs of our entire community. I encourage you to share your comments at a meeting or send me an email with your thoughts, concerns, and ideas. Thanks again for giving me the opportunity to serve you and LCC, and I can't wait to get started. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you for your comments. Any other comments? Yep. All right. Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
If you, if you don't mind, Mr. Chair, I appreciate it. I took six bullet points, so not, maybe not as articulate as the trustee next to me. I did want to also kind of echo and make the same thanks to everyone who supported me in my campaign and along the way. A real tough one with no opponent out there, but I appreciate everyone who still gave their energy and support along the way. As trustee Weisman said, you know, what's going on at the national level is something that is palpable and something we can't, I wish we could lose sight of, but we cannot lose sight of. And I made mention earlier, but that's what I tell my students in my intro to public policy class is that we've seen government not work at the national level, but we can see it work at the local level. And why I'm so passionate about the local level and boards like this board that we are so lucky to sit on. And I think all of us here are devoted to making it work and we can make it work here at the local level. And I am no stranger to the dysfunction that we've seen here. And I am really excited to jumping over that and moving on to greener and brighter pastures here. I, I ran because I believe the opportunity that this institution provides for Lane and all the counties and folks that make up this constituency that we serve is something we need to use as our North Star. Our North Star is our students, it's our staff, it's our faculty that make sure that we are providing an institution that will stand here for years to come. And I'm really excited to continue to serve with you all for twelve years or two. But I'm really excited to be here and I really appreciate everyone who made, made themselves available to be here as well. Thank you.
Humor is always good. Yes. Anyway, any other board comments, questions? I just wanted to note in regards to board comments, the end of session report from Oregon Community College Association. I want to thank all those who lobbied, who got, went up to Salem. Brett, you were an invaluable, you were an amazing asset to our conversations at a legislative level. And additionally, I mentioned last time in the last board comment question in regards to four J and so forth. I want to welcome Superintendent Mickelson to the community. And I hope that President Bolger and I can maybe schedule a meeting in the future. And yeah, I'd love to coordinate that with you if possible. So excellent. Other than that, we are adjourned. Thank you so much, everyone.